Meeting will begin with our pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, to the full house, as always. We do have registration to address the board on actual items that are on our agenda. If anyone would like to address the board on any of the items on the agenda, fill out the form near Attorney Elwood and return it to the board table. And we will be happy to bring you up at the appropriate time. We also have regular public comment at the end of our meeting for anyone who would like to discuss any topic with the board. Again, there are forms near Attorney Elwood that you could fill out and return to the board table to be recognized at the end of our meeting. All board members were provided background information to the items on the agenda in preparation for this meeting. As always, our meeting is being livestreamed, so we welcome those who are viewing us remotely. I do want to mention that Trustee Smith was unable to join us this evening, and Trustee Finley is joining us remotely, so welcome, Trustee Finley. Because of the weather, we did kind of shorten our agenda here, postponed a couple of things, so we did have some student staff presentations with the girls wrestling state qualifier, so hopefully we can get them in here at a future meeting to talk about that, as well as the IRE3 presentation that was scheduled for this evening. And again, because of board members that aren't here and the weather, we'll bring those up at our next meeting, hopefully. So with that, are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board? If not, we'll move on to our superintendent's consent agenda, which contains our personnel report for January 22, 2024, our donation report, our claims report, as well as our facility use request report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing un-called roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Next, we have our board consent agenda, which has our minutes of our reorganization and discussion meeting from January the 8th, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the board consent agenda.
I will second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing un-call roll, please.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to our board development committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
The Portage Township Food Pantry meeting that was scheduled for Tuesday, last Tuesday, has been rescheduled to tomorrow. That'll probably be my last report, then.
Okay, very good.
And I do have one thing, Trustee Miletto?
Yes, please.
Yes, there's something that Indian School Board Associations emailed to all of the board members. It would have been earlier today. It's a call to action. It's our first one. It's about House Bill 1376. They want us to vote, I'm sorry, call our legislators in opposition, so a vote of no on House Bill 1376, so that we can maintain local decision-making and the tools to manage operations, facilities, and safety issues when the needs arise. Our discussion is around restricting when a school corporation can conduct a referendum to only November general elections. So the question, or really the support that's being is for us to vote no within the next 24 hours. So just wanted to share that with you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other board reports?
Yes. So the Portage Township Education Foundation is a nonprofit organization established in 2006, comprised of dedicated volunteers from throughout the community. The foundation engages the community in support of educational innovations that improve student achievement. We award grants annually to PTS educators and employees to fund innovative projects that inspire our students to achieve in school, work, and in life. Since the foundation was established, it has awarded over $200,000 in grants to PTS employees for their innovative learning projects. We remain dedicated to supporting all employees and our students in the efforts to innovate and achieve. The Education Foundation 2024 Grant Cycle is now open, and the deadline to submit grants is February 15. The Education Foundation is excited to announce that our grant cycle is now open. Grant guidelines and applications can be downloaded on our website and then emailed to ptefgrants@gmail.com. There is also a digital form that applicants can access on the website. All grants must be submitted no later than 4:00 PM on February 15 to be considered. Proposals that specifically interest the Portage Township Education Foundation are those that accelerate student achievement, demonstrate innovation, capture students' interests, and foster hands-on interdisciplinary experiential learning. We aim to award grants to any employee within the Portage Township schools. So again, that deadline is February 15 at 4:00 PM. Some ways that people can support the foundation, we still have 500 club tickets available. The cost is $25 a ticket, and you can purchase from any board member. A ticket will allow you three chances to win at each of the four drawings. The drawings will be held in March, June, September, and December of this year. We are hosting the world-famous Harlem Wizards on February 21 at Portage High School. This is an extremely fun family event. Tickets are available for purchase now. You can access that link through our Facebook page. All proceeds from this event go directly to the foundation. Also, you can purchase an education license plate when renewing at the BMV, and 75% of the plate fee will come back to the foundation. Always make a one-time donation at any time by contacting us through our Facebook page or via email at ptefinfo@portage.k12.in.us.
Great, thank you. I will report, we did have a park board meeting last week, so you know the park board will begin doing a search for a new park superintendent here shortly. There is an interim in place as of right now. But a couple of things of interest to the schools. They're talking about Wolf Park, putting a disc golf course at Wolf Park is something. And the other thing is, the park department is looking to maybe put up a small greenhouse and start growing some of their own plants, flowers, et cetera. And we thought maybe that might be a nice fit for the schools. I know we have some garden clubs. It might be a fun project, maybe some collaboration there. So, you know, I know that Mrs. Falk is one for sure that I know is involved in...
Also, Mr. Kraus, we've got a couple.
Yeah, so it might be some good collaboration there, get the kids involved and help them. So the thought there was is it might be something, you know, that they're going to plant some trees and do some things that they'd like to start in a greenhouse and maybe kind of take care of that instead of having to purchase all those things separately. So that's about it for the park board. Any other reports? If not, we'll move on. I don't think we have any old business under new business. We have our approval of resolution R01-2024 for the transfer of appropriations. I'll read this quickly. Whereas it has been determined that it is not necessary to transfer appropriations within the education fund and operation fund budgets, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of School Trustees of the Portage Township Schools, Porter County, Portage, Indiana, that for the expenses of said school corporation, the following sums of money are hereby transferred for the purpose specified herein, subject to the laws governing the same, with an effective date of December 31, 2023. This will be from account 17400 Joint Services, $1,894,297.32 to 1210 Special Programs. Do we have a motion to approve this transfer of appropriations resolution?
Make a motion to approve the transfer of appropriations, as read.
Second.
The motion is second. Dr. Alanis or Nick, can you just briefly explain it to those who are watching?
I'm going to make a huge assumption here, because this is a special education transfer. Joint Services was previously PCES, Porter County Education Services, so these would be funds that we would previously utilize to pay our special education service staff. Now that we house our own and they are now our employees, we need those dollars to transfer from the account that was Joint Services into one of our in-house, that stays here, accounts. So that is just putting it in the account so that we pay them out of a separate account instead of the joint service.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing un-call roll, please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes. Next, we have our approval of the IRE3 Resolution R0...
I'm sorry, President Miletto, we have a second one for Operations Fund.
Oh, and I missed that one, I'm sorry. So we have the, I don't see the resolution. Oh, there it is. Sorry, my mistake. So this one is a transfer from account 45100, Building Construction, $657,667.86, going to Building Maintenance 26200 in that same amount. Do we have a motion to approve? It's actually, it's the same resolution as before.
Okay.
It's our -1-2024, so how would we do this?
Just approve it again, it's fully read.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the fully-read resolution.
Make a motion to approve, as read and presented.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? This one seems pretty self-explanatory. Hearing un-call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the IRE3 Resolution R02-2024.
May I suggest we maybe just table that until we have the IRE3 presentation?
Very good, yes. Do we have a motion to table Resolution, IRE3 Resolution R02-2024?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to table?
I'm sorry, my bad. Table, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
So I would like to know, I was going to ask that question even as it was going to be presented. What percentage of our third-grade students are at passing or close to that 95%? I know we'll have a couple of years to work toward that, but I was just trying to get an idea.
Around 80% right now.
About 80%, okay. Okay, that's a question I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing un-call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Next up, we have our recommendation and approval of the E-Rate Provider. Dr. Alanis?
The recommendation to award the E-Rate bid was made with our E-Rate consultant, Adtech Inc. We recommend awarding the bid to MNW Telecom, Inc. for the next three years. MNW has demonstrated the capability to meet our specific requirements for internet speed. They have proven a track record of reliability, competitive, lowest pricing, and their commitment to provide scalable and high-performance internet services. Five vendors bid on our E-Rate service. The total cost for the initial rate of 15 gigs at $3,850 per month. If we decide, we could go up to 20 gigs if necessary in the future, and at that rate, the cost would be $5,500 per month. So we gave ourselves some opportunity to grow within how much capacity we may need.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing un-call roll, please.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Next, we have our administrator contract extensions.
So I want to thank you for the administrative increases that you provided, my admin team. This is just a formality that I wanted to, as you had approved previously, the rolling two-year contracts for administrators, with the exception of Dr. Stevens as a superintendent having a rolling three-year. I just wanted to formally bring to you the opportunity to extend those contracts, the additional year, prior to putting your, affixing your signatures to them.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the administrator contract extensions?
I make a motion to approve the administrator contract extensions.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions?
I would just like to say that our district, as well as our school administrators, they play a critical role in improving the learning environment and the overall academic progress of our students, as well as the social, emotional learning that is being presented and taught to our students. So I just feel that as a district, we're really fortunate to have such effective, hard-working, and caring administrators.
Thank you. Yeah, and by giving them the two-year contract, gives them a vote of confidence, so they're not kind of lame dogs out there on final years of contracts and not knowing what their future is. So I think it's a good practice, so thank you for bringing that forward. Any other questions or discussions?
And I appreciate Dr. Stevens' role in working with the building and other administrators, and congratulations on that three-year contract.
Thank you. Do you have a speech or anything?
Oh, there's a storm coming.
The call roll, please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes. Next, we have our acceptance of the robotic grant funds.
The K-12 Robotics Competition Grant has been approved by the Indiana Department of Education. This is in the amount of $48,443.14. The grant was written to support the purchase of robotics equipment, as well as competition expenses for the eight Portage High School teams and sailor.
Great. Do we have a motion to accept the robotics grant funds?
I make a motion to accept the robotics grant fund.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions?
As I was looking at the Indiana Department of Education website, I noticed that we are one of the 168 recipients, and there are 291 school districts, so, you know.
Yes.
You know, I just know that these are opportunities for our students to have a lot of hands-on, and it really, those experiences help them with career choices and opportunities. So very happy to receive that.
Very pricey, so these grants are very helpful.
Yes.
Did you have something, Dr. Finley?
No, I was listening to Dr. Allen, and I talked about they're very pricey, which is a lay-up, yes.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? The call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Next, we have our acceptance of the fiscal year 2023 Title II Grant Funds.
So this has also been approved by the Indiana Department of Education in the amount of $269,740.90. Of this amount, $18,067.34 is our shared amount for the three non-public schools as part of the federal required equitable, excuse me, equitable service provision. This grant provides funding for several professional development initiatives, coursework opportunities for multilanguage learners, and high-ability licensure programs. Also, our literacy coach for the 2425 Literacy Cadre, and supports for the Panorama Survey Platform, and our Paraeducator online subscription for their professional development.
That's great, thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the fiscal year 2023 Title II Grant Funds?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? As always, it's great to get these grants and they're definitely put to good use. Is this a Linda Williams?
Yes, these are both Linda Williams, and of course, robotics is also with Mr. Kappas.
Yeah, so thank you to both of them for always being on top of the grants and securing the money. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing un-call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Next, we have our approval for the 2024 School Board Attorney Rate Increase.
So similar to last meeting, when Chris Sears and Zick, we approved their rates for this school year. This is the same hourly rate for the law firm of Raym Elwood and McClure, with an increase of $25 an hour, which is still drastically under what is the market outside of the non-municipal rate.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the 2024 School Board Attorney Rate Increase?
I make a motion to approve the 2024 School Board Attorney Rate Increase.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Well, I'd just say, Mr. Elwood, thank you for the hometown discount, as always. We know that this is certainly a discounted rate, but your commitment to Portage Township Schools is certainly appreciated, and I'm just publicly saying what a great job you do representing us and helping us as we go through, every day there's some legal challenges and things, and your advice and guidance is very, very much appreciated.
Most of the time.
Most of the time it's not wanted or welcomed.
I also appreciate your knowledge and your expertise and your commitment to this school district. I feel we're very fortunate to have you represent us. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing un-call roll?
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Was that a very slow, yeah? Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have our retroactive approval of the overnight field trip by the Portage High School Girls Wrestling Team to Kokomo, Indiana, for the state wrestling tournament, which took place January 11th and 12th. The robotics team to Sandusky, Ohio, on January the 18th for a robotics tournament. Do we have a motion to approve the retroactive overnight field trips?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? We'll be hearing from the girls wrestling, hopefully, the next meeting.
That's our hope, yes.
Hear the results. Very good. Nicole roll, please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie? Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes. Next, we have our approval of the grief grant.
So Stephanie Barrett, who is our Director of MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, so our student support programs. This is a grant with the Coalition to Support Grieving Students. It's developed to address the short- and long-term impacts of children's ability to learn during and beyond grief established by Grief Sensitive Schools Initiative. One of the founding members of the Coalition, New York Life Agent and Portage resident Tiffany Walker, provides the training to identified school staff in addition to grant funds for the purpose of purchasing tools to equip participating schools to support grieving students. So grant dollars are awarded in the amount of $500 per training activity, and they keep Stephanie apprised of the amount of the dollars at the elementary and middle school each year that are available and when they're running low. So this is just simply making it known that we have dollars, and they'll let us know if dollars start to run low, depending on the activities we are doing within the district.
That's great. Do we have a motion to approve the grief grant?
I make a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? The motion is second. Any discussion?
So my question is, most of that money, that 500, is for the training, of course, of the individuals, the staff members that will be trained? Do we know how many, or is it just one person that's going to be receiving the training?
I can get more information.
Okay. And I was wondering if, once you find out, if you can find out, do those, does that money also include materials for students, for example, videos or books?
Okay.
Things of that nature?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, too.
Yes.
I'm wondering, because Ms. Barrett is a Portage resident, if we could maybe send her either a thank you or have her come to one of the board meetings so we could thank her personally, because I researched this one, and it just takes a lot of work to even get that going, and I'd just love to know more about it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? You're in on call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes.
And finally, we have our approval of contract service agreement subscriptions for January 22nd, 2024.
So we just have two for this meeting, so for the Technology Department and Curriculum, Power School for Schoology Learning Management System, January of '24 through July of '24, in the amount of $29,250.50, and this will be paid out of the Operations Fund. The Schoology Learning Management System, as you probably know, is where our curriculum is put in place digitally online for our students, so our students and teachers access it. This is sixth through 12th grade, and IT on the backend also utilizes it, and it connects to Power School. For the HR Department, the Vector Solutions Employee Safety and Compliance Library, these are not only the state-required trainings, but also additional trainings that we can assign based on employee interest or remediation needs for employees based on improvement necessary, or just simply additional training needs that we feel need to take place within a given department or group of employees. This is from February 1st of '24 through January 31st of '25, in the amount of $9,284, and also paid out of the Operations Fund.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the contract service agreements and subscriptions for January 22nd, 2024?
I make a motion to approve the contract service agreements, subscriptions.
Second?
We have a motion is second. Any further discussion or questions? You're in on call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Miletto?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. And Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Alanis?
Most important, the Community Survey was sent out through Parent Square. It's also on our social media. It's going to also be in the Board's update this week. It opened today and is available for the community to take through February 2nd. This is the Panorama Survey that really drives all of our initiatives. It is also the survey data that we utilize during strategic planning. We use the employee data, the student data, the parent data, and then that community information to drive our goals and our specific strategies for achievement, for culture, and just seeing what things we have in place for implementation. Also, I'm going to be working with Cindy to send out some available opportunities to schedule meetings for the Finance Committee, Buildings and Grounds, and also Policy, so be looking for some information to come on those things. The only other item I had to share with you, Dr. Finley and I had communicated a little bit last week about the Community Collaboration Challenge Grant, and that application was due last week. We did put in for that last year. We did not receive it, but we put in for it again this year. I'm excited, and this grant is, what we put in for was for our 360 events. So with our partnership and how the Portage EDC puts on the 360s with healthcare manufacturing and now the building trades, we also now are looking to expand how we can connect families with the opportunity to then have a follow-up evening to hear about what the students learned during those days events, and be able to partner with having them come in with their students in the evening and possibly have some of those partner organizations, businesses, to be there in the evening and help share. So we are looking to have a connection, a bridge night, to connect families with those partner organizations, so that we have a next phase of what that career path looks like, and then essentially also looking to cover all five areas of next-level jobs, to include IT, business, transportation, and construction. So we put the grant in, and again, I think in the long run, the goal is to see how we can expand that and bring our families in regardless of receiving this grant with some community partners. We clearly have a lot of people at the table who'd probably be willing to do that with our partners through the EDC, so I think that it's going to be able to occur regardless, but I think this was a great starting point to see where we can go.
Might be a great way to take that to the next level, for sure.
Yes, I think that that family encouragement piece, to connect that opportunity and really help parents see the options that are available, especially when you're talking about families that may think that know that four-year degree is a must, and then now you're having a child that's thinking they really want to go into the trades, and then hearing all of the positives that come from going into an apprenticeship program instead, and what can be realized, and the living that you can make, that could be a real strong possibility for kids.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else that they'd like to discuss this evening, or any questions for Dr. Alanis over here? No, so we have the State House Legislative Day on February 6th and 7th, correct?
Correct, it's February the 6th.
February 6th.
It's on the 5th, but it's on the 6th.
Thank you. And our next meeting is on February the 12th at 5:00. We'll be back here at the Administration Building.
One other item, February 15th is the State of the City Address.
And that will be at Woodland Park, I believe.
Yes.
Very good. Also, I just wanted, I failed, I want to thank Dr. Alanis, Dr. Stevens, Nick, for some collaboration working with the city. Mayor Bontar, new mayor, had reached out and asked to meet with them to talk about maybe some synergies that could happen, both with purchasing and even just some help with some best practices within HR or some various other things, and I thought it was a great meeting, and sometimes like that, those meetings will continue on, and there's some good synergies that can happen between the schools and the city, which is, you know, we all know, the city sells itself on having great schools, and the great schools sells itself on being in a great city, so those two things go together well. So thank you all for participating in that. And if no one has anything else, I just wanted to be safe in the ice. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.